Okay.
How do they, are they the regular batteries? I thought them things charged.
Everybody house staying warm? What? Want to do it? Six o'clock. I'd like to call to order the City Council Regular Meeting November tenth, two thousand twenty-five at six o'clock. That wasn't good. That's better. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Soder.
Present.
Mayor Protem Messick.
Present.
Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Don Dixon. Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Alfred Dixon.
Present.
Councilmember Lester. He noted for the record that he'll be arriving a few minutes late. We have a quorum.
Thank you so very much. At this time, we'll have our invocation by our City of Jonesboro Police Chaplain. Chaplain Pastor Robert Taylor, Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church.
To the mayor and to the council and to all of the citizens here in Jonesboro, let us bow his forward word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you, oh God, just to say thank you right now. We thank you, Lord, for lying down on last night, Father, and God, we thank you, Lord, for waking us up this morning, Lord. Allowing us, Lord, to see a brand-new day. And with this day, God, you've given us new grace and new mercy, and you have given us favor. And for that, God, we have to say thank you right now. You watched over us, Lord, this entire day, and now, Father, it's here in the evening time. And we have come together, God, just to do business, Lord, for you. We thank you, Lord, for our city. We thank you, Lord, for our county. We pray right now in the name of Jesus that you bless everyone, God. We thank you for our mayor. We pray, Lord, that you would continue to bless her. We thank you, Lord, for all of the people who sit on the council, God. We pray that you will continue to bless them. Now, God, as we conduct business, Father, we do it, Father, in your name. We pray that you would get all of the glory. We pray, Lord, that you would just give us understanding and wisdom. Lord, for all the things, Lord, that's happening in the world right now, we need you more than ever before. So bless, Lord. The police department, bless, Lord. All of our staff members, bless, Lord. All of the citizens, Lord, that lives here in Jonesboro and in Clayton County. These are the blessings we ask in your precious Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we have an agenda before you. Staff, are there any adjustments? For the agenda?
Yes, there's no adjustments to the agenda, but when we get to the items associated with the Astoria property, I would request that it be tabled.
Okay, perfect. Counsel, any additions? All right, if not, I entertain a motion to accept the agenda as posted.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have one presentation. It's our proclamation recognizing Veterans Day, and we're going to present that to Pastor Taylor. Go Army. It's our Veterans Day proclamation that we'll be celebrating. Just so you'll know, the City of Jonesboro offices will be closed tomorrow. Sanitation and police department will be open. Whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been secured and protected by the courageous men and women who have served in the armed forces of the United States. And whereas Veterans Day offers a moment for all citizens to honor the sacrifices made by those who have worn the uniform of our nation, defending liberty and upholding justice around the world. And whereas we recognize the enduring contributions of veterans to our communities, our economy, and our national character, and we confirm our commitment to supporting them in their transition to civilian life. Whereas it's fitting and proper that we express our gratitude to all veterans, past and present, for their service, sacrifice, and dedication to the ideals of democracy. Now therefore, I, Dr. Danielle Sard, the mayor of the City of Jonesboro, do hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Veterans Day in the City of Jonesboro, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to join in honoring our veterans through acts of service, expressions, and expressions of appreciation. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my seal this tenth day of November two thousand twenty-five. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have to grab some pictures? Happy birthday.
Do we have any other veterans in the audience? If you would please stand so we can recognize you all. Thank you all for your service. At this time, we have public comment. Public comment. You'll have three minutes. For our public comments, citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the mayor and council. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon the mayor and the council. Please state your name and address if you so desire, and speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers should be courteous again and respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the mayor and council. At this, today, we have Drew Andrews.
May I?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, madam clerk. I'm Drew Andrews. I reside at eight-one-seven-two Winfield, dispelled W-Y-N-F-I-E-L-D Drive. That's in Jonesboro. Three-oh-two-three-eight.
Can you give me that house number again?
Eight-one-seven-two.
Okay, thank you.
Winfield. That's, I'm your unincorporated neighbor from Jonesboro. And I come before you this evening as the chair of the Clayton County Democratic Party, and I want to give congratulations to all the candidates, the newly elected, to include Ms. Cynthia Fox. And congratulations to all the candidates who ran, but did not, you know, succeed this time. Congratulations. But I also want to share with you that as I was looking at the candidates, those who were elected, a great number of them is under forty years old. And that's historic, because I look around the different municipalities, and we don't see that. And so our youth, who are the majority, many don't realize that, who are the majority who reside in Clayton County, are now reflective in leadership positions, and the City of Jonesboro is leading the way with that. So thank you. We also know that the Dixon brothers, the Twin Towers, that reside here in the City of Jonesboro, will be on the dais next year. So congratulations to both of you as well. But sadly, the reason why I'm here is because of what's been happening online. There's been a rash of comments that has risen to the level, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. That has risen to the level where we need to be really concerned. Because we know that political violence is real across the nation. And as Pastor Taylor prayed about, he alluded to what's happened nationally. What has been happening in other states, I do not want to happen here. So regardless of party affiliation, we have a responsibility to call out political violence and address it appropriately immediately. And so I take personal issue with anyone who hides behind anonymity on social media. I believe in the right of free speech. So if you have something to say, say it. There's nothing wrong with having an opinion. What is wrong when it crosses the line until you're threatening people? And there was a threat that was...
I'm giving ten seconds.
There was a threat made to one of your newly elected council members. That's unacceptable, and I hope that you investigate and take action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to have your time.
Thank you. Lance Van Dyke? I'll share it with you. Please tell me you got good news for him.
Well, I've had two email contacts, so we don't know what's really going on on that yet. But I have been contacted. This actually about something similar, but not quite the same.
Okay.
Lance Van Dyke. I own property at two fifty-one South Main Street. I've been a member of Jonesboro for over twenty-five years. We're having a few meetings today or discussions about conditional use permits for property very close to my property. Has there been any checking into what it's going to do to the property values of the businesses that are in the area where this is going to happen? Because, of course, it's, number one, changed our zoning, but it's going to be changing the whole landscape of the area, shall we say. You know, will Protree or will Pat and Jerry's, you know, will places like we have be able to operate?
If they're there, they'll be able to continue to operate.
As they are?
Yes, sir. They get grandfathered in.
But what if the property owners go to sell them? And that's why I said, what's it going to do to property values? Has there anything...
Can't speculate on values, but I think Ms. Akuta, when she has conversations, can you? Because we can't really speculate on, because we don't know what businesses are going to come in and what their product revenue or business might be.
Are the current zonings for the areas, are they going to be protected as they are? Or are my office officers going to find out that I'm R two?
I don't believe so. You won't.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We're working with you all, but it's not to displace anyone, but thank you so much. That concludes our public comment. At this time, we'll go into our public hearings. Ms. Akuta, are these the ones A, B, and, no, I'm sorry?
It'll be item A, C, D, E, and F are the ones I'm requesting to table.
Okay, well, let's come back to A because it's not, because B is something else. So would you like to table the public hearing, A?
Yes, the public hearing, item A, and then item C, D, E, and F.
Okay, so we're going to go in order. So item A is tabled?
Yes.
All right. Item B.
Okay. Public hearing regarding conditional use permit application, twenty-five CUP zero-one-zero, submitted by Sharita Cherry for property located at eight-seven-one-two Tara Boulevard. Parcel number zero-five-two-four-two-B, eight-zero-zero-two, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six. The property consists of zero-point-four-zero-plus or minus acres. The request is for the operation of a technical and trade school for cosmetology. Staff recommends approval.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens of Jonesboro. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request without conditions.
Is there anyone here to speak in that public hearing? I'll now consider that public hearing closed. At this time, I entertain a vote for approval of conditional use permit application number twenty-five dash CUP dash zero-one-zero. Yes?
May I make a motion for us to approve the conditional use permit application number twenty-five dash CUP dash zero-one-zero?
Mayor, second that motion.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much. Item C will be tabled. Item D will be tabled. Item E will be tabled. Item F will be tabled. That concludes our public hearings for the night. Is that correct, Chair?
We need a motion to table.
Can I entertain a motion to table items A, C, D, E, and F?
May I make a motion that we table these items A, C, D, E, and F?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That brings us to approval of minutes. Can we entertain motions for each set of members' minutes separately?
Counsel, to consider approval of the regular council meeting minutes dated nine-eight-twenty-five. This item was tabled from ten-fourteen-twenty-five.
May I make a motion to approve?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much.
Next item. Counsel to consider approval of the work session minutes dated ten-six-twenty-twenty-five.
May I make a motion to approve?
Just a motion to approve? Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Mayor, I have a question before...
Yes.
With the contract for Falcon, I want to give a chance for our attorney to look over it, as well as Falcon to look over it. So I want to know, can the motion go through with the understanding that the attorneys will still have to review the applicant, I mean, I'm sorry, the contract?
Which date? That was for ten-six?
Yeah, item B.
Up under approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself.
You got ahead of yourself. I'm like, we're not even down there. Okay, perfect. So where am I? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you so much.
Item C. Counsel to consider approval of the regular council meeting minutes dated ten-fourteen-twenty-five.
I entertain a motion to accept those minutes unless there were some additions or edits that need to be made.
Motion to approve.
May I second that motion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Item D. Counsel to consider approval of the special call meeting minutes dated ten-seventeen-twenty-five.
Counsel, I would ask if you all don't mind if we table this. I have some questions, but I want to give Madam Clerk a chance to re-listen to it again. And I didn't see them until today. Do you all mind tabling these until next month?
May I make a motion to table the minutes for approval from special call meeting, ten-seventeen-twenty-five?
Correct. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And counsel, I would ask to sign for item E. Again, my apologies, I just want her to give her a chance to go back and listen. Can I entertain a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Any opposed? Counsel, we have a consent agenda. If there's no additions or subtraction from the consent agenda, and items don't need to be heard individually, I entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. Do you want to move item B out of...
Sorry. So yes, I would still like to move forward with it, but I just wanted to give them a chance to look over the actual contract.
So then I don't want to approve it? Because if they haven't looked it over, and if it's a problem, and we already approved it.
So the language will have to be... Okay.
Is that okay?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. I was looking over some notes from another meeting, just under the consent agenda, under D, private call technologies to do the data conversion to two-fifty. Didn't we say, within the minutes, that we... I'm so sorry.
My hearing aids aren't in, and then I'm not using my microphone, so y'all get to hear what I hear. Didn't we decide that two-fifty was going to be used for the Youth City Council?
No, the Youth City is for all of our grant funding. And it's my understanding that the Youth City Council and all grants will go up under two-fifty, and she'll have sub lines. So it's not just for that one, it's for all of them.
All the grants that we did from here on out will go under two-fifty.
Okay, perfect.
So that's like our grant line.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so counsel, we'll move item B. Can I entertain a motion to move item B to old business for the month of December?
May I make a motion to move item B on the consent agenda to old business for December?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to accept our consent agenda with all items except for item B.
So may I?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. At this time, the only old business we have, were there any additional discussions for our fiscal year twenty-six budget? If you all need some more time, we can entertain some questions, do a special... If you all need some more time, we can entertain some questions, do a special call meeting between now and December, but I'm hoping in December, we can do our fiscal year. Yes?
Can we get a printed copy of that as well?
Correct, yes. We leave printed copies tomorrow for the, for the new one in the office. They'll be done like tomorrow morning, so you can come get it.
I'll give you a page on the new file.
But if we get out here early, then maybe we could run and make them today?
We'd be happy to do so.
If y'all get them out here early, which you can get them for you tonight. If we get out of here early, she can get them for you tonight. All right.
At least I'm honest.
Yes. Item, new business, no new business. Um, Ms. Akuta, would you like to give an economic development report tonight, or not?
Yes. So I'm happy to report the SCEI grant was submitted. So, um, it was submitted October 31st, so we have to wait, believe, second week of December for a decision. So, um, yeah, it's going to go from 20 cities to 15, so we're hoping to be in the number.
Thank you so much. And I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Faith Akuta, Lisa Adaboie, and I think supplemental staff has supported as well, Shelby and Taylor and everybody else. This is our Southern Economic Initiative. Yeah, but it's through NLC. Um, it was a $15,000 grant, and I think we requested $60,000, and it's looking at our entire procurement process. Um, they've done a lot of work, um, in getting it ready, so I, I'm feeling really good about it. But thank you so very much for you all, um, for working on that, and super excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Nobody else want to say anything? All right. Counsel, I'll entertain some reports from our city council members. Councilman Powell? Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to share a vote.
I'll turn my microphone back on. With Veterans Day being tomorrow, I just wanted to share a little scripture from John 15:13. Greater love has no one than this to lay down one's life for one's friends. And, and that is what touches my heart with our families and friends that serve in the military and those that have given their lives. Um, in my own family, my grandfather served in World War II, and my father-in-law served in Korean War. So, and my, and my late husband, he was an Army man too. Praise God, he served in peacetime, but I'm thankful for all veterans that served and those that continue to serve. Thank you so much.
Councilman Don Dixon?
Uh, just like to say thank you to all the veterans that have served.
Councilwoman H. Miller?
Um, okay, okay. So, yes. First and foremost, always thank you to our amazing staff. We have the best staff in the land. They always make it happen, no matter what, and I'm so appreciative. There are a few things that I have going on that I'd like to talk about. We are doing a Jamaica relief effort. Um, if you all are familiar, Jamaica was hit by, um, a storm, Melissa, and it, it was terrible. It caused so much damage. They're still trying to calculate how much damage it caused, how many lives were lost. And so I'll be having a donation bucket in the lobby of the city center. If you all have canned goods, diapers, wipes, um, just anything that you think they may need. Some people don't have water, um, so the wipes and things are helpful, um, non-perishable. Anything that you, that you may have at home, um, that you may be able to bring up, we would appreciate it. It's duty free to send it until November 28th, so I'll probably be collecting until around the 25th. Also, we have our, I have my second annual Christmas giveaway. And so if you or anyone you know first and foremost need assistance for Christmas, please, um, have them sign up. The sheet will be posted this week in the lobby. It'll also be posted on my social media, and we'll have it posted on Jonesboro government page as well. If you would like to volunteer or donate, um, please feel free to bring unwrapped gifts to the city center. I will have a bucket for that as well. Um, thank you all for all that you do. I know we ask a lot sometimes for donations and things like that, but it takes the village, right? So I'm appreciative, but that's what will be going on for me. And of course, Happy Veterans Day. Um, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Councilman Lester?
I'd like to thank all the candidates that ran, um, that came. Who's that guy out there? To all of them, congratulations to everybody, to all of us that ran, Ms. Arlene, myself, let's see, Russell or, did I see San Tia earlier? But thank y'all, and, uh, hope y'all have a good time, uh, when, uh, after January, what is it? The first or the 22nd? I remember there's one, but, uh, it all comes by so fast. But, um, enjoy your time, and, uh, we'll see you, see you then. But, uh, Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans. Uh, my father, served in World War II. And, uh, well, and my son, my son was a veteran too. I forgot about that. How did we get a son yesterday? But, uh, so what happens when you get old, you know? But everybody have a great week, and, uh, we'll see you next month.
Councilman Alfred Dixon?
I definitely share the, uh, the sentiments that my colleagues had given earlier in regards to Veterans Day. Thank each and every one of you all for your service. Congratulations to all the candidates who, who ran for city council, and, uh, special congratulations to everyone who was victorious that night. Um, I look forward to serving with each and every one of you all next year and beyond. I would like to invite, um, each of you all out next Monday to the JYCG Friendsgiving Budget Retreat. It'll be right here at the JYCG, I mean, right here in the community room, or right here in the, um, at the Jonesboro City Center, um, inside the community room. Please come out, uh, staff, city council members, everyone is invited. Let me see. Oh, yeah, definitely want to give a huge shout out to the Cigar Parlor. Um, they was voted as the number one, number one cigar lounge in the metro Atlanta area for 20, uh, 2025. Um, that's huge, you know, so. Yeah, that's huge. So just thank you, Cigar Parlor, for providing that, that experience for Clayton County and beyond to experience, so thank you.
All right, thank you so very much. Um, few announcements over here. Again, Happy Veterans Day. Um, city will be, city will be officially closed, but our public works department, so sanitation route will not change, as well as our Jonesboro Police Department as well. I too have, my father was military, I'm a military brat. I don't know if you all know that, I was born in Fort Benning. My father did two tours of Vietnam, and my son is a Navy veteran out of the United States Naval Academy. So really thankful for all your acts of service that you all have. Um, we Thanksgiving, we are in the process of maybe hosting a community Thanksgiving on Thanksgiving Day. So please follow us on all our social media platforms, as well as our website. And if we can pull that off to be able to serve, um, a Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day to our community, then we're going to try to pull it out, especially in light of some of our fellow citizens losing maybe some of their SNAP benefits. So we are working on that. Ms. Miller told you about her thing. We'll post that on our social media outlets, as well as our webpage, so they can scan the QR code for registration. Is that good? All right, shout out to Shelby Bentley, who has become our local arborist, it seems like. Another grant, $10,000 grant, um, and we're giving away trees. What kind of tree is this, Shelby?
Uh, we have red maypoles, we have a couple oaks, and we also have, um, magnolias.
Magnolias, good. And we'll be giving those away November 22nd at 114 North Avenue, and that is our community garden. You're going to get an entire tree, a mulch bag, a tree care kit, but you need to sign up. You need to sign up. This is through the Georgia Tree Council, Georgia Forestry Commission, as well as Lowe's, our partner, is assisting with us as well. Also, for those seniors that need their whole, their, um, you, you need to, you need the thing dug to put your plant in, we'll be making reservations and getting our public works to come out there.
As long as they're in city limits.
As long as you're in city limits. Priority is given to our city of Jonesboro residents for those that need to have a whole dug for their plants. So again, thank you so much. Registration closes on November 7th, but we're going to open it back up?
We are. We still have a couple species available, but we're dwindling.
I didn't sign up. I want the magnolia. I want a magnolia. Okay, perfect. All right, I'm excited about this. Calling all singers of all ages, join our first ever Jonesboro Community Choir. And I will tell you, according to Pat Daniel, you don't have to be a singer, you can just join, bring good spirit. Um, you can sign up on this. We'll have two practices, November 18th and December 2nd at 6 o'clock, and they'll perform at our annual community tree lighting celebration, which will be December 3rd at 6:00 PM. Counsel, I don't think any of you all have registered for the choir? And I will expect to see that some registrations open, so we can have some council members there. Okay, I need y'all to join the choir. But if you all are out there, please join the choir. This will be fun. We have all ages, nine months to 99. So please join us right now. It looks like we have 33 people total. So we might have a whole stuff, a lot of stuff going on. We're doing this in collaboration with the Salvation Army. They're bringing out their band, as well as their canteen for our hot chocolate and donuts. It'll be a great event if you've ever done our tree lighting, and we have a very special guest that will be lighting our tree, and that's always a surprise. And we're excited about that. Again, that's December 3rd from 6 to 7:00 PM. If you'd like to volunteer, let us know that. Um, our RFP for city attorney is posted, tree lighting on 12/3, tree giveaway on 11/22. Only, Asia Miller's going to get a tree council. Remember, y'all not signing up for y'all trees either? We need y'all to get a tree, um, planted in memory of somebody. Um, all November, we're doing our Main Street sock drive. We have a bend right outside. I can tell you CBS has socks for a dollar, so bring your socks. Um, we talked about Asia Miller's holiday, and we're closed tomorrow. Is that everything else, Shelby? Oh, and, oh, um, two of our council members, November 18th, food drive at Mondays Meal High School. That's a food giveaway or drive?
Food giveaway.
Giveaway, a food giveaway. And we are going to continue to post as many of the food, community food giveaways on our social media, as well as our Facebook. Again, thank you so much to all the candidates that ran in our upcoming election. I want to give a shout out to our election superintendent. Thank you so much for the work that you did. Although it was ran by the county, it was ran smoothly. Um, I think it was a great burden off of council, um, off, off of staff, so we could just run business as usual. Our two new elector, uh, three new electors will be having a newly elected, newly elected council members on December 12th and 13th. You'll get details for that. And their swearing in will be on January 5th. Thank you so much. There'll be a community reception from 4 to 5, swearing in at 5, and then y'all come on up here and start working at 6 o'clock. Um, more information coming out. Counsel, I really thank you so much. Counsel, do we need executive session today?
Uh, yes, please. And also, yeah, I would like to have executive session. Yeah.
To discuss?
It'll be real fast.
Okay, which, what, what, what we discussing? Is it personnel litigation or real estate?
Yeah, it'd be, uh, under personnel, real estate, or, uh, litigation.
No, I'm saying which one?
Personnel.
Okay, personnel. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of personnel matters. Counsel, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Y'all stay warm. Staff, you all can be dismissed. No. You going to go print? Okay. All right, thank you so much. Y'all stay warm. Staff, you all can be dismissed. No. You going to go print? Okay. Maria, what's the address for Cloud Street, our, the city property on Cloud Street? 173. I'll entertain a motion to go into a regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in exec, regular session. Counsel, is there any matters to be heard before the council? Or any actions that need to be taken based on decisions made in executive session?
Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion for the property that the city owns at 173 Cloud Street to move forward with the renovations needed, with a budget up to 22, not to exceed, up to $22,000, including any necessary inspections that need to be made.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Second.
I'm in discussion. Counsel, I would also add that I will bring a budget adjustment or amendment line item for funding to December. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you, Counsel. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you so much.